No.
No.
Okay. Thank you and welcome to the August 6th, 2024 City Council in City of Angels Camp. Rose, roll plug please.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Shemente?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sharato?
Yeah.
Council or vice chair? And then Mayor Hurdin?
Present.
And then Councilmember Rowley is absent.
Okay, thank you. Um, we do not have a report out of close session. We're going back in at the end of the night. So we will move on to the pledge of allegiance.
Shy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No.
That's the auditor phone call.
Just yeah.
Uh, item seven.
I'm trying to get to the point where I can share my screen. Just how you share. Uh huh, yeah. People on them, but if you want me to connect or share my screen, but it's off. Here it goes. It was like.
Please? No, no, they're having a technical.
I was just curious if anybody was ever wanting, that's all.
You got anybody online with us?
Um, our auditors are online.
Okay, perfect. So we're going to move on to item seven, which is approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Does anybody have any reason to amend anything on the agenda?
Steve, do you have any reason?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Any member of the public? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion on item seven.
So.
Motion.
Call second.
And a second. Michelle, can you do a little follow up? Not now, please.
To come.
Yes. We'll be done.
I.
Sharon.
Hi.
Moncada.
Hi.
Hurdin.
Hi. Thank you.
Item eight is public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda. That is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda, and speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Does anybody have any public comments tonight? Can you see if anyone's raising their hand online for public comment, Rose?
Nobody online.
Nobody, okay. Close your public comment. Moving on to consent. We have two items on consent, A and B. Uh, I would like to pull item B for discussion.
I had to abstain behind.
Okay, so we'll handle these individually, it sounds like, because this one needs to pull item A. So let's go ahead and start with item A. Anybody have any discussion on item B for the minutes of July 16?
Just stating for those asking.
Yeah. Any members of the public to discuss this item? Okay. Bringing it back, looking for a motion.
Well, to move.
An emotion.
Second.
A second.
Shemente?
Hi.
Sharato?
Hi.
Moncada?
Observe.
Hurdin?
Hi.
Thank you.
Like a little angel question.
Item B is the, um, resolution 24-58, not raising road closure of State Highway 49 in the City of Angels Camp for the Bret Hart Uncoming Parade. Um, the reason that I pulled this is not because I'm not in support of it whatsoever, but it is simply because in years past, I can remember that the, uh, leadership director at Bret Hart wanted to make sure that we align with her after the project so that she can get the hard costs. She likes to make her kids, the leadership class kids, aware of the costs associated with it and what was involved in this road closure so that it's kind of a learning opportunity and so that they can make a, a project out of it. Um, so that they really understand that it is abandoned, it is the, you know, the traffic control, it's the police, it's all the things. Um, and then to track the cost, the hard cost, so she knows. I know last year she provided a lot of volunteers for us with the traffic control, and she's willing to do that again, but I want to make sure that that doesn't get lost in translation this year. So that's the reason I pulled it. Anybody have any other comments on that?
You know, when I first came on, we had this discussion about what fees can we waive and what fees can't we waive and what are the hard costs? I mean, when you think about what the, what this homecoming parade does and the amount of people who are, who attend this parade, um, you know, I, it's one of those things I wonder if whether or not we should actually be, be charging because I, it is something that benefits the city. And I, I think there are some other things that we charge and we talked about the fact that we don't have a truck and so we have to sell out some of that, but, um, and it's about, is it about $700 or so?
Yeah, we pulled some costs from last year and, um, $600 for the, for the bucket truck to come out and, uh, do their thing, about $750 for the police and roughly four to six staff hours, different staff area with different things throughout the process. So we have a rough cost of what it, what it cost this last year and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll track the cost this year just so that we're aware and so that she can present that to her students.
Perfect.
As a learning experience.
Michelle, did we budget a certain amount of items for these types of things throughout the year? We had kind of called out, that's like three or four, yes, so we have a budgetable item. Just want to make sure I've transcribed that correctly. Thanks.
Do we have a budgetable item to offset the cost for the fact that, or to?
We can offset the cost, correct. So we have enough to mean support fetching.
And so, okay. And Tyra is aware of that and is Tyra, is this one of the projects that's eligible for that?
This would be one of those that would be.
Okay.
I think we kind of determined homecoming, Christmas parade, fair.
Right.
I remember we set up projects in our accounting software to track and then the cost.
And then. Got offsetting.
Report to become the all support.
Perfect.
Offset.
And we also periodically, I think at the beginning of the year, we have to communicate with Caltrans and give them our.
Right.
Annual, so this is a replenishment account. It's getting easier, knock on wood. Um, it was a heavy lift there for a minute and then it's gotten easier, so.
As long as there's some financial support from the city, there's support, not only for the effort, for the pair and for the Christmas, all of those things. I, I think that's important for us to be good stewards.
Down the.
So.
Perfect, no, it sounds like you're doing it by already accounting for what we spent last year in the homecoming loss. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. We are looking for a motion for resolution 24-58.
So.
And I will, okay, good. Again, second and a first.
Shemente?
Hi.
Sharato?
Hi.
Moncada?
Hi.
Hurdin?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our regular agenda, item 10A, uh, to accept the City of Angels' June 30th, 2023 audited financial statement. Michelle, we have a presentation?
We do, so we have, um, Anthony Gonzalez, he is our auditor from Price Page Company.
No relation.
No relation. No relation. Gonzalez with a Z. And, um, and I wish you could see here, we're having technical difficulties.
They can't see you, Anthony. Are they on the TV? They are on this TV. Is there going to be a presentation?
Yeah.
If you guys want to come over here, you can.
How's the water? Is it good?
Yeah, I'm gonna. I'm going to go watch the presentation, Tom. Okay.
He's too young to be an.
Michelle, okay. I'll put them on over.
All right, well, good evening.
Water's fine, Michelle.
All right, good evening, everyone. Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Well, first off, uh, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, you know, present all the hard work that we've done to get here. So my name is Anthony Gonzalez. I'm a CPA with Price Page Company. Uh, I served as the in charge auditor for the 2023 audit of the City of Angels. And so tonight, we're here to present to you, uh, our audit. So I'm going to briefly share with you, um, a PowerPoint if I can.
Yeah, you can. I'll see if I can do.
Okay, can you folks see that?
Yes.
So.
We're going.
Okay, so my agenda tonight, I'll talk a little bit about who we are and what we do. We'll talk about the audit, uh, process itself, what the scope of our audit was for this year, uh, touch on some of the areas that we focused our procedures on, uh, during our audit, and then finish up with the results of our audit, which are the audit reports and our required communications. So before I get started, are there any questions? Perfect. Okay, so Price Page Company is running that paperwork for. Uh, we're based in Clovis, California. We were founded in 1976. We've been performing, uh, accounting services for 45 years with a deep specialization in serving governments. Right now, we have about 120 different audits, uh, municipalities, cities, counties, and nonprofit organizations. Uh, right now, we have about 60 employees and about 15 certified public accountants.
Wow.
Specifically for the City of Angels' audit of, uh, the 2023 fiscal year, uh, the audit engagement partner was Fausto Hinojosa. He serves as our managing partner as well, uh, myself. I, uh, was the supervisor for this year's audit. And then we also have two additional professional staff members and our administrative support team. So all combined, over 50 years of audit and attest services. This year's scope of the audit included an audit of the city's financial statements in accordance with applicable audit standards. So because the City of Angels is a municipality, we follow the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, uh, generally accepted auditing standards in addition to the government audit standards. So it's an additional layer of, um, uh, complexity focused on specifics related to governments. Correct? Uh, also, the city did expend more than 750,000 federal awards, which triggered a single audit requirement. So we also audited the city's, um, compliance with federal awards. That's what we call a single audit. So.
These audits are what we call a risk-based audit and they're designed to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are being returned as necessary.
So.
Lots of impact there, but essentially it is, um, an audit that we focus our efforts on the highest level of risk.
Right?
Right? In addition to that, it's not designed to identify every five dollar attempt at a misstatement, but those misstatements are material. So if the example I give is if I told you I had $10,000 bank account and I needed a hundred dollar loan, you would probably draw that one. But if I actually had $50 in account, that may change your decision to cross. So that would be a material mistake. So again, we contract cities to perform audit of the financial statements, can the compliance with federal awards, and it is a risk-based audit designed to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free for internal use. So we know. Okay, so that's the process kind of starts with us, uh, going through the city, getting into the discussion of what's going on, what happened during the year, what types of transactions are, big process by the city, what kind of contract, kind of, uh, uh, late revenue this first time, and play, like. So that we can determine where the risk lasts. We assess risks due to two things. One, due to your discipline and due to fraud. While we're doing that, we consider the city's internal processes. So what does the city do to ensure that, um, dispersment may only take off. Things like that, to gain understanding, to see if they are effectively designed and also actually a special operation. So there's not a shot at designing, it's not going to. And it's in board work. If it's effective design, it may not help. So we need to understand all that. Once we obtain that understanding, then we actually develop our policy features to obtain evidence about the financial statements, balances, and transactions. Any questions?
No.
This year's audit, we focused on quite different areas, some key highlights. Uh, we touched on cities cash management, sort of portfolio as always, we've always been cash, uh, most all transactions run through these cash channels. So accordingly, we're very interested in that. Also, we've got a bunch of audits. So we've seen that. We've seen revenue, inventory, listing activity. Uh, this includes your governmental rental revenue, your credit card revenue, your charge customers, much like that. We tested these expenditures, including salaries, accounts payable. This would also include any, uh, allowable ability costs relevant to the reports I was saying, so. Uh, you have a grant, 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 or did you spend that money in accordance with that? Correct. We also look at the city's council access, so are our things, the important amounts, are they being appreciated in accordance with applicable standards, so on and so forth. Uh, also, we took that the city's fund balances, activities, um, custodial activities, that are managed by the city, but not actually or an negotiation to the city. The next area is pension liability. This is the city's estimated liability for retired police. What you expect to pay, there's a lot of inputs, a lot of estimates. So because of that, we focus to look at it. And then in final, what we call SABDA or subscription-based information technology, for instance. This is actually a new standard, which is why we focused on this year. And these are required to need to. Have products for report on ballot change, uh, amounts, or traction under certain IT arrangements, so very new, reportedly high risk. So that's kind of the focus of this agenda. Okay, and so now we're going to support on financial statements. This is where we actually note for our audit. So I'm pleased to report that the City of Angels receives an unmodified by your authority opinion. And this tells users financial statements that the city had a product that was proven in accordance with all applicable standards and that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Okay, but also notes that significant policies that consistent with applied financials and that the estimates included are reasonable in light of certain expenses. And then finally, it's complete and completely worked in the specified status. So all of them do that. Any questions?
No.
Okay. The next work we're going to move into is government standards support. So as I just mentioned, we perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted audit standards in addition to government audit standards. These standards require that if we identify fish, fish needs during our test of, uh, the city's activity that we reported, depending on significance. Okay, so we did identify one material over the city's financial support report and find more information on it. And that'll lay out the conditions and cause and also provide management response to what the plan or rectify by the issues identified by this year. So no opinion is being provided on this report. It is more informational. Okay? Okay. And then the next step we're moving into the federal uniform final report, also it's a single audit report. Uh, we noticed that we had about one point in federal expenditure this year across various areas this year. We tested fines for that, that were no fines and we had a issue and unmodified people for compliance, also a present question. Very good news. Uh, no, no, the kitchen machines related to compliance and we determined a CCA, which is scheduled federal awards, is fairly spaced in relation to the city's financial processes. So all of that news is there. Okay? Okay. And lastly, we're going to move into what we call required communications. So this was provided by the city council, what's called a, uh, communication letter. And this is just some of the P E aspects of the audit. So, uh, significant account policies, the changes to those that were clear was the implementation of GAZB6, kind of what I talked about earlier, subscription-based information on the rate regulations. The significant estimates included in the financials include the city's allowance for accounts. So that's the estimate of what you expect to not collect for services, basically still owed to you, uh, essentially. Also, I see this has been a pension liability. Uh, again, a lot of estimates owed to you to, uh, how much you're going to pay for retired retirees, uh, uh, how long they expect to live, what are the benefits of that? As well as the one of the obligations. So not just the retirement tax, but the actual health insurance cost as well. And then finally, the pre-creation, so how the city's eligibility costs attribute to things like vehicles over the course of their whole life. The most sensible structure in the final statement is the fund balance, which you found on note 13. And this describes which individual funds are under audit. Uh, we've not been able to, can you pull these up for our audit? The significant audit adjustments that were proposed, that's part of our audit, are attached to the communication report. We have no disagreements with management. And we are not aware, uh, we did not identify fraud, illegal acts as part of our audit. So with that, to summarize the, the results of the audit, but if you have any questions, I can ask you to do my best to answer that.
Edgeband? No question? No, I don't think we have any, Anthony. Thirty.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
I appreciate you.
Uh huh. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and open up public comment. We're actually with a couple of I see here, maybe just. Public comment on this item? Does anybody have any public comments? Or we? Okay, and then nobody else has any questions or comments?
I just want to commend Michelle with working with the auditors and, you know, I mean, some of this you may have been a part of, I just, you came in after the fact and, uh, I just appreciate the work that you are doing and the work that you did and make this audit was very complimentary of what you can do and, and the good standing our city is in financial, most of our financials.
Yeah, we're very fortunate to make this change. This is what I think, you know, is, is great for the city in terms of moving to this new firm and the high level they elevated us, you know, and they're also here to edge pants. Um, I really did, that's part of the reason why it took so long, did a deep dive into everything and we just cleaned up a lot of old stuff and going forward, it's, it's going to be quite nice and playful, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Okay, moving on, we're going to go to item B, which is our rural recreation and tourism program, Doots Park Light and Running Expansion Program, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Amy, give us your.
Mayor and councilmembers, um, you've been seeing some activity out there. We're going forward on the playground fairly swiftly. Hope to have that done. I will give you the exact date, but, uh, we're going to be close by the end of month.
Thank you.
Um, you also saw some reading out there today. That was through the stage and pavilion. On the eighth, we'll be going to the planning commission that, asking them to give input on the color of the building that we'll be having since it's very, very visible from the height, right? Um, we will also be preparing the slab in over the old lightner. Breaking news on August the 14th at 9:00 AM, if the neighbors have been notified, it's a bathroom under the light.
So.
So eight from tomorrow, we'll have the bathroom. There, Mark Twain has been repainted. He's got some final touch-ups. The frogs have been made. Uh, we will not put him back in the park until most of the disruption in that portion of the park is done because we don't want it broken. And, um, we may wait to put the frogs back on it until, um.
Grand opening, kind of an idea.
So we also got the flyer out for the benches and, uh, they showed us photos of what the wood looks like now, very, very nice. Uh, they did tell us that it was, was not, that those trees were really, really, really ready to come down. And, um, they noticed a lot of rock in them as they were working on them. So that's basically where we are. I'd be happy to answer any questions, gave you a bunch of pictures this time. And that's all of that. Okay, comment?
Amy, is there going to be a French drain around that, that wall, that eight-foot wall where the amphitheater is going to be?
I can check on that. We don't have the actual design detail. Engineer is still working on that, so we don't have a quote to that.
True.
My good love.
It probably should, since it's being cut into the bank. Yeah. Yeah. Don't you think?
I would absolutely say yes.
I would double check. I know that, um, as you can see from the dirt, the non-dirt that they're moving out there, there's a lot of rock. Um, so I'm sure they'll look at that. We have it fairly meticulous and she has.
I request you. Amy, what do you think of probability of, I know you said you didn't want to give a timeline for the playground completion, but what do you think of like the end of getting a playground portion opened up for the remainder of the summer would be?
We, well, if by the remainder of the summer, you'd be, meaning by September, I think the councils are very good.
Public comment. I know we have a couple of people online, Rose. Do we have anyone that wants to raise their hand and ask questions? Uh, you. No. Seeing none. We bring that back. Thank you so much, Amy, for the update. Now it looks like we're tracking on budget, so keep up the good work. Thank you so much. Moving on to item C, this is a public hearing. This is to introduce, waive the first reading, hold a public hearing, and set August 20th of 2024 for a second public hearing to consider ordinance 540 adopting a new section 17.06230 establishing construction average. Amy.
Mayor and councilmembers, this was in response to a public comment that came up. Uh, consideration, there were some people got woke up, there was some construction noise. So we did draft a code amendment that went to the planning commission July 11th, where it was recommended for approval after several changes on a vote of 4-0 with one absence. Um, basically, it's really, really similar to what most people do, um, except that we took some extra time to talk about exactly what holidays we were relaxing so that things like three-day weekends or, um, a day in the middle of the work week would necessarily require you to stop work as well as, um, including, this was right in the middle of the 110th victory of Mother, and so we were thinking of things like people were taking trees, blah, blah, blah. So we did put provisions in there for when there's like heat advisory or excessive heat warning issued by the National Weather Service that you could start slightly. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate, I appreciated the work that, um, the planning commission did on that, especially, uh, considering the fact that on hot days, if you better start an hour early for everyone's sake. I. Yeah.
Sorry, I was reading. And the county, uh, operates under, uh, 7:00 AM as well for starting, but, um, on days that they, that contractors want to start earlier, they have to have prior written notice or some sort of prior authorization. And the reason for that is just for the respect of the, um, residential areas, you know, start in the jackhammer at 6:00 AM when you maybe work a night shift and you're trying to get some sleep or you have a sick quality baby or things like that come into play. Um, was, was that discussed at planning and all about like a, not just, hey, it looks like it's going to be hot tomorrow, so let's get there early type thing, but maybe actually communicating with the city and asking for permission to start an hour early?
It was considered, um, they felt that they could specify some really close.
The heat parameters.
Okay, 6:00 AM, if the National Weather Services said it's going to be a heat advisor. Um, and we tried to think of instances where you would want to start earlier. Frankly, it was heat, heat, heat.
Yeah.
In all cases. So we, they felt that they basically had addressed that. This also does not apply for emergencies, in which case the city can authorize it. Also does not apply to city capital improvement projects undertaken by our own contractors. We generally specify in their contracts if they can or cannot. We certainly have that provision.
How is this communicated to the general public, Amy?
These are, um, we do a legal notice in the paper and we post the legal notices and then we do that again for this meeting. So there's been at least two postings, um.
So there's been at least two postings um, of this item.
And does it go into detail, just as, you know, with the conditions, it's usually, you know, starting at seven and/or on days when they, with excessive heat, we're gonna start at six? Is that still out anywhere?
No, but after it's adopted and before it goes into effect, you have to thirty days in advance write the whole thing out and it gets published in the newspaper.
Okay.
And it'll be on our website.
And on our website.
Because I think that's one of the things that's probably the most looked up as noise or news on our website.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, and we don't have one. This will be our first.
Yeah.
To me.
Okay, and public, well, we're going to actually open the public hearing at this time, waive the first reading. Uh, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and we will um, pursue the second reading on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four for a second public hearing. Sorry, need a motion to introduce this. If I could get a motion.
I'll be for it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Also again.
In section. Shemante?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. And we will see you on August twentieth, twenty-fourth for the next uh, reading. Thank you. Item D is a public hearing to introduce, waive the first reading, call the public hearing and set August twentieth of twenty-fourth to consider ordinance five four one, adopting changes to the Angels Camp Municipal Code regarding small and large animal keeping, including increasing the number of fowl allowed per parcel, requiring fowl to be kept in adequately sized coops, requiring ten-foot setbacks from property lines for coops, prohibiting roosters, eliminating permit requirements, and maintaining fowl in a clean and healthy environment. Changes will amend portions of sections seventeen oh nine zero one zero, definitions one point one seven one seven zero, public nuisance, and new section seventeen oh six two two zero, addressing small and large animal keeping and delete portions of existing code sections previously referenced, the use of seventeen eighteen zero three zero K, L seventeen one three zero two zero C, seventeen one three zero three zero D, and seventeen one five zero two zero C and D.
Mayor and council members, yes, this actually does all include it in the legal description. Um, so people would get a pretty good idea. This was also in response to public comments and a request. We actually brought a draft to you before we went to the planning commission. Um, we went to the planning commission on July eleventh, where I'd like to say it was really simply handled. It was not. There was quite a debate. The planning commission felt very strongly um, that parcels that were of a certain smallest size. We spent most of our time talking about quarter acre and smaller and whether or not it was appropriate to have um, foul twelve of them on those parcels. We also touched base on whether to do it in R two and R three, um, which is uh, generally duplexes and urban complexes. Bottom line is um, the planning commission, and it's all summarized on page one twenty-six, came up, fuck your agenda packet, came up with slightly more restrictive um, chicken limits. Instead of going from, like you did, up to point three quarters of acre, you can have twelve. They actually broke it down into half acre, quarter acre. After thinking about it and after the planning commission meeting, I realized that what the planning commission was actually talking about mostly was they kept saying, but what about the annex, where you have those little tiny lots? What about, and they were very specific about little tiny lots? And came to realize they were talking about non-conforming lots, lots that are not meeting the minimum standards of the code, four thousand square foot lots. And when you look at a four thousand square foot lot and you think to yourself, wow, if I'm being generous with the area I'm allowing for chickens and maybe we're gonna do a run and have almost a thousand square feet for chickens, that's a quarter of a four thousand square foot lot. That also has a house, it also has parking, starts becoming a little dense in with your neighbors and whatnot. So staff actually has an additional um, thing for you to consider. Um, if you wanted to do a compromise between what you proposed and what planning commission proposed, basically sticking with what you proposed, but including a provision that if there were legal non-conforming lot sizes, in other words, those four thousand square foot lots, that you would then reduce the number of chickens proportionately. Um, so that was basically the one recommendation. R two and R three, after the planning commission meeting, I went back through R two and R three parcels. There are some that have single-family residences that are larger parcels, um, because they're not developed as multifamily. I would also recommend that you consider, yes, allowing R two, R three with single-family residences on legal conforming lots as decides that you also allow twelve chickens. That's a lot to throw out there. Um, again, what's before you today is, we'd like to have some direction from you. Which one you want to bring back on the twentieth? Um, the one you proposed originally, the one proposed by the planning commission, or the sort of hybrid um, that staff is proposing? Be happy to answer any questions. I did not bring in my stack of chicken butts. But to.
Give reasons. Okay. So we're open up to the chair in this time. And do you want to make some comments on the received public comment? If anybody has any. Sure, let's open it.
Do you have any public comment on this? Any one wanting in? Uh, Amy, when this came to planning, was it, was there an attendance in public?
There was not.
Really?
We did the legal noticing that.
He'll support.
Didn't find anybody that.
No, public comment.
Nobody's raising their hand.
Great. Who else there? Confident in us, maybe? Okay, I'll pipe this way. Okay, Caroline.
I, uh, after reviewing all this, I, I'm leaning towards the planning commission's recommendations. I think um, I love chickens. So, and I feel like um, just right now with everybody and the economic times, I feel like people can at least have some chickens and get eggs, that's, there's some good protein there. It's easy. Chickens are pretty simple pets. Um, and if you have three, because you have a little tiny lot, you have three chickens. I mean, I think that's actually pretty good. It keeps um, keeps your buzz down, it's natural fertilizer. I don't know, I just, I'm a big fan and I think, I, I think what the planning commission proposes is pretty decent and pretty um.
Come in a sense.
So that's fine.
So you're okay with the twelve chickens on a non-conforming lot where, rather than the hyper, the meat in the middle is seven on an? So a non-conforming lot, Amy, you're considering is uh, under seven thousand square feet, right?
In the, in the R one zone district.
In the R one. And how, how many of those do we have?
Yeah. Pretty much anything that was created back before nineteen seventies um, has the potential to be a legal non-conforming lot. Twenty percent chickens.
They don't need a ton of space. You're talking about a thousand-foot run. At like twenty-four and that not, it is like, they just don't need a ton of space. So I. So a small yard, a small dog, a rent type thing? I don't know. I just don't think.
And their recommendation is to, to allow the twelve chickens under a half acre?
Well, I thought it wasn't to allow.
No, uh, the planning commission is up to a half acre between a quarter and a half, they say six. Between up to twenty, uh, quarter acre, they say three. And um, yeah, so three, they go with a minimum of three, then they go to six. And then they jump up to the twelve, but you have to have more than half acre for twelve, under the planning commission recommendation. You don't get into the legal conforming or not unless you look at staffs.
Unfortunately.
Because you, and so you're saying with the four thousand square foot lot, you're, you're saying seven chickens.
Right, that's a, that's a percent.
But again, that's staff. That is not what the planning commission.
I'm just, I'm just getting very honest. Okay.
And that was a hypothetical.
Sir.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this um, diagram that you included. And so, but just.
Well.
On page one twenty-six.
One twenty-six.
And so in looking at that, we've got the existing code that proposed code presented to council, I have the planning commission recommendations, and then the staff suggestion for inspiration. So maybe it serves a clarification, if we were to go with what the planning commission recommended, it would just be less than that column?
Yes. Correct, you would only go with the green stuff.
And can you do a hybrid, like um, with the point seven five acre? The ones, the one small non-hipped animal? And I actually do need, I made a little bit of clarification, I just remembered I had another question about something, but um, with that, uh, with the suggestion from staff, the one small non-hipped animal unit, twelve chickens, can we put that in the, I mean, can we like take some of?
So that is the hybrid? It basically takes yours, it takes the planning commission and it's sort of.
That's the staff.
The staff suggestion.
And then it's.
And the one question, clarifying question I had was for four H and FFA.
Mm-hmm.
So then the rules are different because they're being overseen by the own, their own regulations of their um.
They.
Yes.
Their swine leader, who is making sure, going to their house and making sure that there's the adequate space, adequate things. Is that what we're saying?
Except that, um, the planning commission, and I did not go over that, recommended that you not use hoofed within the city.
Yeah.
Um, because they said that these programs, based upon what was happening with their kids and such, that they did out-of-city properties where they um, hosted kids who wanted to do this on larger parcels.
I don't know, I know we have hoofed animals in town. I see them in town.
And so they.
For the period of time. For the period of the time, and I checked with all my neighbors and we had our leader come to make sure we had the space. I had a point, what was it, what was the max, the max of what, point eight two acres?
Generally, it's an acre or larger.
I know, but I'm saying that, that our old lot was like, what, point seven nine or something? And we had two, and it was fine. It was plenty of space.
So that recommendation's not in this, that diagram?
Yeah, that's why.
No, that is your recommendation. So if you go with your original recommendation, that's what you stick with.
You would stick with that.
Um, if you went with planning commission, you would not stick with that.
Then if you want to, the staff, which is a compromise between the two, we could add that.
Yes. Yes.
We could add that.
Well, actually, we'll just stick with what you already have.
What we already have.
Which is already there.
Yeah.
Go down.
With the, with what counts, because I wasn't here for that council meeting about chickens, so um, um, the, the council recommendation that we gave to you, what, what was that for the smaller lots?
It was just twelve.
It was twelve.
There was twelve no roosters.
You have a lot, you could do below, oh yeah.
Yeah, it's twelve no roosters.
Okay, I'm gonna um, rescind what I said before.
You took that back. Let's just go through this hearing, right? Yeah. Yes. Just that pretty true.
So, so what do you?
I um, appreciate all of the work that the committee did. However, I am in agreeance with what Caroline mentioned about chickens, not requiring that much. Which was actually with getting someone fed chicken, um, fresh eggs and having to go back to the stories. I'd love to have chickens. My other lot was quite too free and basic, so. Uh, like, so I should be at the moment.
I, I agree.
I agree with that.
I, I agree. I appreciate the planning commission's time and concerns. You know, having neighbors on both sides, I mean, with, with chickens, I don't think it's an issue. Um, I, I do think that roosters aren't necessary. And uh, I would like it, I would like this to be a permitted use. And then I think follow up if we have any complaints. That's what I'd like to see.
When we say permitted use, what?
That means you, you don't have to know. They can just, yeah.
I agree with that. So is there any other discrepancies? Because we need to be the direction as to what to move forward with on that for the second reading, correct? So. That's what, yes, we should try to get to that. Are there any other discrepancies between?
Density, R two or three, the R two or three.
Yeah, Amy, I, I was the one that when we first had this discussion, thinking that people who live, you know, in apartments could come together and have chickens. And I appreciated your comment. Um, well, I think it's viable, I just don't know really how viable that is. You know, people are gonna come and go and all of that, and whose chickens are these?
Who gets the eggs?
And you know, I, I, you know, thinking from a practical point of view, it's a protein source. I don't, just don't know how problematic that would be. I, I, I don't know. Maybe a triplex or, you know, uh, or duplex where it's just two families. But I think if an apartment complex, it could get interesting.
What were your thoughts on R two, R three that's developed as a single-family residence?
Oh, it's, as long as it's the same effect, yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna, I don't want police any apartment building, chicken.
No.
Habitat, but um, yeah.
The current code asked proposed does not allow in R two or three, this would be in addition to your.
I claim.
Code.
Right.
So to add R two or three for single-family residences in those on the distance.
It's single family.
I mean, yeah, let's have chickens.
I'll bring, I'll bring that back.
Well, um.
So I think we're gonna need a motion.
We gotta get out here to introduce, so you have two readings and that's the introduction, first one. If you come back with something substantially different, next time you have to do another first review before you do the second. So I think you want to tie either continue it or tie it down pretty good tonight, would be my recommendation.
Amy, we have a fair.
I'm hearing stick with what you have, go ahead and do R two, R three on single-family residence, with the single-family residence.
Yeah, you said with family?
Yes.
Make that motion like.
Okay, I make a motion to.
Dude, we did public hearing.
Yeah, I did, I have a public hearing.
No staff in the motion?
Yeah, 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 we do just start the.
Okay, I, I make a motion to um.
Stay with?
Stay with our current, the, the council's current direction regarding chickens. It's twelve chickens, parcel-sized as a matter, permitted use, no roosters. And it's okay in R two and R three.
With a single-family residence.
With a single-family residence.
Go ahead.
I'm just like, okay, family motion. Yes.
And um, scheduling the second hearing.
Or.
Well, scheduling, yeah, yeah, yeah. And that too.
August twentieth.
August twentieth.
So we have a motion. It was a good motion.
That is, isn't it?
We'll second it.
Takes a village.
Shemante?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, you know, please share, as, as was stated by Isabel, that we appreciate your contribution.
Thank you for um, helping me. Uh, item E, to approve construction change order number one on the Boosterway Sewer Replacement Project. Amy Richards, thank you.
Mayor Herden, City Council, we have uh, the Boosterway Sewer Replacement Project is the first in multiple projects uh, that we had planned to upgrade, uh, expand, rehabilitate the major trunk sewer through the community. Um, we started on this project, this project was bid this spring. It was awarded to our Sutton Enterprises and that. Notice receipt was given uh, early in May and we are slowly but surely progressing in that. We ran into a little bit of a, a pause while we waited for uh, a listed.
Bird.
Bird to nest and, and ultimately leave in that. But we haven't, we haven't been making steady progress nonetheless. Uh, this is a project, if, if you have driven over in that, in that direction on, on Boosterway, it's a project right there in front of the UWPA uh, offices, the power plant. We are replacing, we're replacing certain segments of the existing sewer as it crosses Angels Creek, um, as well as the, the stealthy sewer that comes underneath the bridge at Angels Creek that is being replaced and being, and being rerouted. Um, we are, uh, as part of that project, um, we are also um, replacing and upgrading uh, and consolidating the sewer laterals that service the UWPA property. Uh, that was part of the arrangement with UWPA, since much of the work that we're doing is on their property. Uh, ultimately, we anticipate a permanent easement for our trunk sewer that runs right across their property at the, at the conclusion of, of the project and that. The, where we are at, at this point, we are right on the, right on the cusp of actually starting a lot of the major rework replacement of the sewer uh, over the next couple of weeks. You'll, as I say, you'll notice if you drive down that street that there's a, a lot of equipment uh, just across the street. You'll, as I say, you'll notice if you drive down that street, that there's a lot of equipment just across the street in a staging area from UWPA. We also have a staging area in Tryon Park where the contractor will be doing some of the welding work. As he, as he assembles the stainless steel pipe that's gonna come across the Angels Creek at that, at that point in that. We have been coordinating all of that work with our colleagues at the fire department, just to make sure that there isn't any issues with welding in that, in that area. The contractor will have a water truck there, we may even have a fire engine parked there when that, when that work is being done. In the process of advancing the work, we did a lot of, or the contractors done a lot of pre-work, a lot of potholing and that. Looking for or confirming the location of various utilities as we, to make sure that there are no conflicts and with the improvements that are, that he is to construct. During the course of doing that potholing, we exposed one section of the existing trunk sewer that was not planned for replacement. That was not planned for replacement, and when we exposed that section of the sewer, it was quite apparent that it should be part of the replacement effort that we were going through in that. It's basically a, the pipe that literally crosses the street in front of the, in front of the UWPA headquarters and, and the whole offices that are there. So we requested a change order from, requested a proposal for a change order from Sutton. And the change order that you'll find right here in your, in your packet and that. It's a, as I say, it's a cost to replace approximately 70 feet of trunk sewer across that street, along with one manhole as, as part of that. The work also includes taking the old sewer, the old, especially cement pipe sewer out and away. And so that's, that was another reason that we had an opportunity to get rid of that. It's, it's, well, we wouldn't go there. It's one of those legacy things that we just, we just wanna get rid of as we, as we go along on that.
Yes.
This is an opportu, we saw this, to be honest, as an opportune time to take care of this work. Because under the, under the base contract, our Sutton has, is required to do a series of bypass pumping. In other words, you'll see, as you drive across that bridge, there is a, there's a pipe there on the surface. That will be the bypass, that will bypass all of that sewer during, during that short period of construction. And so if we were to come back later and have to replace that sewer, that segment, we'd have to do the bypass, we'd have to include that as a cost. So it's, we have a contractor on site, he's literally set up to do this work. The prices that we negotiate with him are consistent with his bid. So there wasn't, there wasn't any additional costs associated with the, with the change order and that. And so we brought the change, we brought this package to you for your, for your approval. And so that's a little bit of the, of the background on why, why we're here and talking about this. We, as I say, we work closely with Chris and staff, and this just seemed like the opportu, or the best opportunity to take care of this segment as part of this overall project right here along Boosterway.
It makes the most sense to do it, we're staged. You know, you're not gonna incur any additional costs except the cost of that new line in, so it makes the most sense. My concern is, how much more of it is out there?
You keep looking, we're gonna stop.
You probably don't wanna know the answer.
No, I know. How much, I mean, but I think it's better to be proactive than to be reactive and do it all over again.
This is, so I started, I began, when I first started, I talked about, this is one of multiple projects.
Right.
That we've got on the books in the capital improvement program, some of which are scheduled for this year for us to try to deliver those projects. We're trying to, you know, essentially rebuild the sewer, the main sewer through the, through the community and that. And what's important about this, and Amy was just, has been hammering me for, well, many months. Many months that we need to get this project done because it was part of the conditions for approving Habitat for the Erie Gobokes. As, as strange as it may seem, all of that wastewater on that side of the community finds its way all the way around and through the, through the heat trunk. And so this is part of this, is getting this piece done.
May I ask one more question?
Yeah.
So is that gonna alleviate the smell that we sometimes have in the, or is that something?
The smell that you recall was something completely.
Yes.
That was the mine?
Yes.
It was leaching?
This is not gonna resolve that.
So that's just because of excess water?
Yeah, basically the mine filled up and it just pushed all the gases out of it.
Okay, okay, let's ask.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? So I've been walking by daily, so I see little progress, it's moving along pretty smoothly, but I did have a question. When you were coming down Boosterway and it sort of appears to the left and right before the UWPA parking lot, I noticed that there's a tree down, does that have anything? There was like a tree recently cut.
No, it didn't have anything to do with that.
I was just curious.
No, the only trees that were taken out as part of that project were right along China Gulch, so it was off the road.
Oh, okay.
So this also for, again, we're trying to, to create the infrastructure that allows, allows some growth in that area. The replacement of the stealth, of the sewer from the stealthy, I mean, I realize that's the stealthy sewer, subdivision sewer and that. That allows, you know, again, puts them in a position potentially to build more homes in that area.
Right.
There seemed to be a delay on the project, was it to work this out, or was, are we waiting for some supplies, or?
The birds.
Birds.
No vax, but birds.
Okay, let's get public comment on this, in case anyone from the public wants to comment on the Boosterway project. None, seeing no public comments. Final questions? While we still have Dave here to ask? Thank you. Seeing no questions or comments, I look to see if anyone wants to consider authorizing the construction change order number one for this, this effort.
So moved.
We have one motion. Oh, second, then a second.
Shemante?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just for reference, every Tuesday morning, nine o'clock, we have a progress meeting right there in front of you, right there in the parking lot.
Go for it. Are you here, you're here in person every week? Or you're zooming in?
No.
No, like sharing person.
Wow.
Oh, Steve said I had a pee pee.
Okay, let's move on to item F. This is the, we're getting the establishment of new job description at the building and fire code official slash code enforcement officer and associated cost and neutral budget transfers.
See you later.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, council members. Before you receive anything, is a request to consider two resolutions, both of which would support the establishment of a new position in the city. A full-time building and code enforcement official, code enforcement officer. That's the first resolution. The second resolution is authorization to transfer funds to create a cost-neutral establishment of this position. So in June of 2022, the city contracted with CSG consultants for the services of building official, building inspector, and code enforcement officer. Currently, we get one building official and we get one code enforcement officer, one day a week, for anywhere between six and eight hours, depending on the demand that we create during the weekend. So essentially, all of that work, all of those requests that we received throughout the week, wait for that one day that that person is here to do that work. And that's how it's been since we've engaged in this agreement with CSG consultants. Last fiscal year, the 23, 24 fiscal year, the city committed $152,864 for this consultant to provide this one day a week service. And while the service has been fine, there are many complaints about the service that is being received in itself, other than the delay that the public has to wait for that person to show up the one day a week. We think there's a, a better way to do it, to better serve this community. Instead of committing that money for two people to serve the city one day a week, we can spend the same amount of money that has already been budgeted for that service. Transfer a portion of that money to salaries and benefits and create one full-time position for that person to be here Monday through Friday, eight to five. Be here every day of the week, just like a regular salaried employee, and provide that service for us. So the agreement that currently exists between the city and CSG consultants expires next year, in 2025. And we are not recommending terminating that agreement early. We would like to have that agreement still in effect in the event we are able to hire a, a single person, and maybe there's too much work for that person. Or in a particular week, he needs a little bit of help. So we want that agreement to remain in place in case we need to use those services to supplement the work of the full-time person. And we don't anticipate that happening, we think that one person can handle the workload. But in the event there's a surge for whatever reason, or there's multiple code compliance or multiple building inspections needed, fire code inspections needed. We still want that ability to engage CSG consultants to handle that extra work. This year, 24, 25, we budgeted $191,600 for that service. Saff is recommending that we transfer $170,000 of that funds to the salary and benefits to support this full-time position. All of the essential functions that are being provided by the CSG consultants are included in your newly created job description of the building and fire code official and code enforcement officer. This would be an FLSA exempt position, so it would be part of the exempt labor group. And FLSA law supports that because of the type of work that this person would be doing. So we feel that this is a, a way to improve the service to the community without spending extra money. And, but still having that little bit of reserve, not reserve, but that little bit of funding available in the CSG line in case we need some extra service. We recommend starting this position at salary range 48 of your salary, of your salary plan that was adopted, I think, in 2020. And there are several attachments included, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I appreciate the work that you've done and staff has done to bring this to our attention. The only thing is, I would ask that you be the one to authorize that additional time, based on what you perceive to be to be. Because I think what we're trying to do is, is get some consistency. And when we bring in some extra person, we need to be really specific about what that expectation is before when those consultants come in, so we don't go backwards.
Yeah, I hear you, I'm here.
And that is another thing, it's presented in the staff report, but there has been a challenge to maintain consistency. Because they might send one person one day and another person another day, and they all have the same level of certification. But they might be in Angels Camp one day, and they might be in Murkies another day, and they might be in Oakdale another day. So they have to know all of the municipal codes for these individual municipalities, as opposed to this one person that can be our so-dat. And know our code inside and out, and not have to worry about, is he applying Oakdale's code or Murkies code or Maple's code?
Yeah, I could be more excited about this because I absolutely think that we have struggled for several years in our, in our businesses and, and people that have experienced our, our inspectors that dealt with that. They've dealt with different interpretations of things, and there's, has not been like continuity. So this could resolve that. I do have a question maybe for legal. My understanding with CSG is that they offer this big brother, deep bench of employees where if we are in over our heads with Habitat Plan Checking, because it's a big project and things like that, CSG can offer that service. I know we're still gonna have the contract for a period of time, but if we have our employee that we hire doing all of this effort, all of this work, where's the liability? Because before, I felt like the liability was with CSG, that if a mistake was made and a building burnt down and it ended up being non-compliant, we didn't catch it, whatever, CSG's, like, like liability insurance would, would pick up the bill?
Our employee therefore our liability.
Yeah, right.
That's correct.
So that's my only concern, and, and I see that all of the certifications and everything are a requirement, so that helps things. It's just gonna be finding that unicorn that's already locked and loaded and ready to go. That's my, that's my only say.
But, you know, the liability is associated with all of our city employees. And that's, that's just a given. And hopefully with training and, and things that, but I, and I don't know, then we would be covered through our JPA, I would assume.
Yeah.
With the liability, so.
Or if they're.
Well, and also, like she was saying too, if they're specializing in Angels Camp, then, you know, Angels Camp, right? That would be, that was right.
Yes, and then seeing progress on code compliance cases as not, you know, not coming and going, but seeing those, writing those through to get them to completion, I think would be great for a single employee carrying that effort.
And I'd like.
You probably.
I'm good.
I, I wanna amend Steve what I said earlier. I, I would like, if you perceive, and this person perceive, that, that we need some additional support. I think we need to be very specific about the task and about what we expect that person to do with that task, so we don't open the can of worms. For example, if it's compliance, and our person has been working with this, you know, person or entity that he specifically says, I want you to come in and I wanna see if they've done it. You know what I'm saying, so that.
Accountability?
Yeah, well, a little bit of accountability and a little bit of more direction for that person.
That person would report directly to the city administrator, right?
Right, and, but I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, it's not go out and go do this maybe, it's, you know, give the, if you, if you can give him like current or her current cases. So that, you know, they just kinda do follow-up and then, and things, as opposed to maybe stir in the pot.
Well, there's probably gonna be the transferred tasks, right? They're gonna have to.
Right, but I'm just thinking when we bring someone in next year as an extra hire.
Oh, got it.
The duties assigned to that extra hire.
This is a, this is, this will be a management level position. So not only is he out there in the field doing the actual work, making inspections, if we do have to hire, you know, extra help or engage the consultant, this person would oversee that work.
And give class.
Specifically work. Exactly, yeah.
Okay. No, I thank you, it's one.
Public comment on this one? We have a public comment. Okay, seeing none. Looking for two different motions. One is for the establishment of the job description, and one is for the adjustment, the budget adjustment, correct?
Yes.
And the resolution.
And the resolution of the job description or declaring, what we got?
There are two.
Two resolutions.
Yes.
2460 and the 2461.
Perfect.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 2460.
And 61?
Oh, can we do it together? And 61.
And the budget transfers?
That's three. And the budget transfers.
I'm gonna have to pull another one. The budget transfer is 61.
It is 61, right?
Yep.
Okay, so 2460 and 61.
Oh, second. We have a second.
Shemante?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you know what, though, there's a error on 2461, it says, whereas the city of Angel's Refreshion 2415, on page 157.
What does it say?
That first sentence.
Whereas the city of Angel's Resilience will fix the typo, I see it. Thank you.
I think on that one, if it's.
Oh no, it says establish a job description.
Yeah, it's.
So is it backwards?
If that's on 61, it's saying, since we've established.
You're referring.
Yeah, I think it's.
I'm mistaken, sorry.
No, no, good try.
Good try.
Good try. You're getting juice box.
Okay, item 11 is administration request. Steve?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things. First thing is that Michelle has been working with our consultant, Bartle Wells, associate for the rate study. And so, we have a question, would like some direction from SAP. The options that we've come up with is to have Bartle Wells come and present information to you at your next regular meeting, which is August 20th. Or would you like to hold a special meeting just for that purpose so that we can take the time that we need to go through all of the information, ask the questions without the pressure of getting through the rest of agenda the week before the 20th or the week after the 20th? So, it's either during the regular council meetings, the week before, or the week after.
So, the week before would be next week?
Yes.
I'm unavailable.
I'm not available.
So, we could do it the week after? I mean, I think it makes sense to just devote the time to the rate study and talk about what our next steps are going to be.
Can we lock in a date now? So, we're looking at the week of the 26th. It looks like the thieving of the 27th is not good.
Good.
We need a good board meeting. Have the number...
Do the 26th or the 20th.
Number 26 or 28. Is like the pecking is what we're should worry as opposed to...
You can do after, even if you think on any of those.
Yeah, late after. Are you thinking like 4 o'clock?
It's my water again.
3 o'clock's generally okay for me. Monday, I'm not. Wednesday afternoon, I could do.
At 3 o'clock?
At 3.
Yeah, but 28?
Correct.
I'm available.
Yeah, Shemente?
Hi. I got you. She made you laugh. I'm available at 3 o'clock.
Juan Pata? Yep, Zach, Steve?
So, we just need to confirm with our consultant, make sure that they're available.
And Alvin, I guess, too.
Yeah, I will tell him. The 28th at 3 o'clock.
Thank you very much. Next item I have for the administrator report is, I've been participating in meetings with CCWD, Utica, and Union. And the most recent meeting was today, Chris Minkler. Chris coming? The CCWD general manager, Mike Minkler, is requesting to present information to this city council. So, he would like to present information on the agency's history and how it is linked to water resources and hydroelectric development on the North Fork status laws, including CCWD's North Fork Hydro Project and the formation of the Utica Water and Power Authority. They recently gave a similar presentation to NCPA Commission and would like to share it with the Utica member agencies. So, the question is, would you like to receive that information? And if so, would you like that at a rate of a council meeting? Or would you like to have a, I guess in the past, we've had kind of a joint...
Oh, a joint JPA.
City Council Union. You...
Yeah, that's the JPA.
Not the JPA. City Council and Union.
A joint, a joint meeting. Not a JPA, not a joint meeting.
No, I don't really want to do another meeting, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And so, the purpose...
I'd rather just do it during our regular meeting.
Just during the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, Steve, so the purpose is that Mike's going to present the history of CCWD to us?
Yeah, he says about a 10 to 15 minute presentation.
I mean, I don't know what his timeline is, but can you just gauge on our future agendas, like a night where it's not so heavy? That would be like...
We don't think we're going to dive into rate study.
Close session after.
Yeah.
Yep.
Tell you.
Got it, thank you.
Take nine minutes of...
Yep.
And then the last thing that I have is, and we'll make this available to the public, but you have asked for a monthly report of department activities. So, this was made available. And I'd like to just briefly go over this, so you know what you're looking at. And then if you don't want me to go over this every month, if you just want this as a handout, we can do it that way. Or I can give you a little bit of information about it at each meeting. So, you tell me what you want after I give you this first one. So, this starts on the first page with just a calendar of events that you can lose pencil in, whatever you want, including city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and just other special meetings that members of this council might have throughout the week. And then it's broken down into administration. Administration talks about our current vacancies, the four vacancies that we had in the month of July. What projects administration is currently working on, and then anything additional that administration would like to share with the city council. Any questions on that one before we move on? Second page goes into the finance department. So, the finance gave kind of an overview of information that they would like you to know that either occurred during the month of July or is upcoming. Second half of page two is code enforcement and buildings. So, you can see in the month of July, the building department issued 26 permits. And there's a breakdown of each kind of permit that was issued. And the building department also did 25 inspections. Code enforcement started the month, starting July 1st, with 58 open cases. During the month of July, we received 10 new cases. We closed five of those cases, and we closed 24 of the existing cases, which gave us a total at the end of the month of 24 open code enforcement cases that were worked on. Next page is water, wastewater, and public works. This is broken down into the first box, system water treatment plant. Those are the kind of the out-of-the-ordinary things that were completed during the month of July for the water treatment staff. Same thing for wastewater treatment. Staff completed those bullet-pointed items in the month of July. Over on the right, the public works staff completed those bullet-pointed items in the month of July. And in the month of August, those are the things that the water and wastewater and public works as a department intend to accomplish during the month. And this is in addition to all of the, you know, I've only been here a month. And I've been on probably three or four, you know, drop everything and all's hands on deck, go deal with this problem with his department. And they've done a great job. I've seen them in action, and it's impressive. So, these things that they have scheduled to do in August is in addition to whatever things might come up during the month. Next box is planning and engineering. Planning and engineering completed those bullet-pointed items during the month of July. And they plan on either starting or completing the ones on the very bottom during the month of August. The last page is the fire and police departments. So, for the fire department, this is a breakdown of responses during the month of July, some notable calls from the fire department during the month of July, and any additional information that the chief would like the city council to know that occurred during the month of July, along with what they plan to either start or complete during the month of August. And the same thing for the police department. It's the activity that the chief felt that the council should be aware of that occurred during the month of July, including 454 total incidents and 21 arrests during the month. Also, additional information that the chief would like you to know that occurred during the month of July and what he has scheduled to occur during the month of August. So, again, this is just a offering of what each department is doing during the month. I can modify this to your preference. I can just hand this out.
I love this. I would request, could you email it? Because it's a lot to dive into, and I could, we could read it and address it if it was digital.
I appreciate the bullet points.
Yeah, I love the way it reads. I love the format, and I like how they...
Well, this is all staff's doing. I mean, I asked every department to contribute, and they all wrote willingly. And it was very good to see how they responded to your request for information.
One thing with that, we originally had planned on bringing the code places like quarterly. Are you okay with just keeping it on that format then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect. I'll just make enough that's... I have it earmarked.
I appreciated your comments in the paper regarding code enforcement. And Jennifer, your comments also were spot on. But thank you for kind of talking about code enforcement and what we do and what the purpose is and things like that. I thought it was well done.
Thank you very much.
I'd love to hear a little bit about the economic development of what's going on in town, like where we are, where's the status of some of the new businesses.
Okay.
Because I don't, I hate bugging you guys about it, but...
Yeah, well, if it's on this, then the public can access it too.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know, like, yeah, what's going on.
And since this is being presented to you today, this will become a public document. We'll post it, it'll be available.
With the...
So, economic development, I got that. If there's anything else, this was your document. So, if you want something, you don't like something, or you want anything changed or more or less information, please let me know, and I'll modify this as the months progress while I'm here.
You know, I think, Steve, too, if you could just kind of give us an update. We're looking at the restaurant. And I think, you know, we heard the restaurant was sold, and now they're looking for a rent. Or just kind of some updates on the vacant building, not all the vacant buildings, but just something that, you know, so that we know if we're, you know, sometimes we're asked questions and...
But if you please hurry for a time there too, right? I guess it's a bit of a confirmed name, because otherwise the rumor will...
Well, I don't, yeah, well, yeah. I just...
So, I agree with what you're saying. I understand why you're asking for it, but I also feel like running was in a public forum, but was not...
Yeah, I don't know if it's actually public for that. I mean, just, I just, it just seems like you start hearing rumors, you know, about the Valenti House and, you know, is that going to be a parking lot or whatever? I mean, I just, I agree. I think we need, it needs to be sensitive, but if it's something that you feel you need to know about...
Yeah, if they come in and pull a permit?
Yeah.
Definitely let you know. You know, if they come in and ask questions, I'd be a little hesitant to share that publicly because I feel like that might be...
If you see something, it's going, you know, something's going to shovel-ready, it's going to break right off.
Yep.
I think that would be good.
Yes.
Because I'm really curious about Habitat. I would have thought they would have started by now.
I'm assuming they did too. We did pre-construction with them last week. And they are waiting on the state to finalize.
Okay.
And then they will start immediately. Everybody's hired and ready to go.
Okay.
Well, they talked about even starting this month.
Yes.
I thought you had any...
Yeah, that would be they.
Yeah. Okay, so, that's it for my report. Thank you very much. If you have, if you want modifications to this format, please let me know, and I'll provide that to you each month.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Absolutely, thank you. Okay, council report. Mike, we'll start with you.
I gave my report last month regarding CPPA. They lowered the rates. And, you know, whether or not that trend will continue, obviously, it depends on a lot of factors. But I thought it was a productive meeting, and Claudia Davis has been appointed as the at-large physician. She works for CCOE. She's a superintendent superintendent for business. And it was good to welcome her aboard. And Mike Minkler is actually the chair of the committee. So, that's all I can...
What's up? Okay. Caroline. Attended UWPA with you, Jen. Was a kind of a wider agenda, but we did get an update on the fuel reduction project that's going on along Hunter Reservoir. It's pretty impressive, but with the pictures of all the fuel that they've redid in the tree, it's just really impressive. And then you might want to, do you want to cover the fish studies? No, I don't have it in front of me.
Because, yeah, there was a discussion about the fish studies requested by the agents. For the FERC exemption?
For the FERC exemption.
The conduit exemption, there's the studies that are coming in, and the consultant. We're trying to keep the studies at a minimum, but there's more fish studies that have to be done that are a variance of, like, to actually look into the eggs and the habits that they've formed. And then, of course, the pontoon and the frogs and all that. So, more studies, more studies. And we knew, I mean, we did, we did, we had to do a budget adjustment. We're still operating for that effort. We're still operating under our reserve account that we'd established, but it's getting expensive.
And the board is very cognizant of the amount it costs with certain consultants. And so, they're looking at, you know, possibly going, you know, out on to bid or in something like that. So, if they are being...
The consultant that we're using for our whole exemption process is the Cadillac. They, I mean, they, that's what we needed it, right? We wanted them to take it across the finish line with us for us. But some of the studies, they will admit that they are not the cheapest for some of these different studies. So, we don't want to kind of like bite the hand that feeds us, but we are right at the brink. And we are, every time they give us a proposal for what the study's going to do, Joel does a really good job of trying to hammer down and get them to shave off anything in any area that they can on the proposal. But we're at the point now where we might have to strike one out for some bids on the studies.
Which they're okay with.
They say they're okay with.
They say they're, they know we're a small agency, so hopefully...
So, it's kind of a...
But it is, it is a big piece of what we're talking about.
So, how does the timing of this fit into the whole FERC exemption? I mean, if we're going to count...
No, it's good. It's actually, it's right, we're right on target.
But with some of these fish studies, we are...
We're right on target with like the eggs and the frogs and the...
There's a time of year that they have to be done, when the water was flowing and it's that or the other. So, we're operating in that.
Oh, okay.
And the goal is to get the application ready to go and submitted, like, the first part of next year.
Okay.
End of December, yeah, so. So, anyway, that's, we did have a discussion regarding the Highway 4 corridor partnership. You know, just looking at if there is any other agencies that we feel should be invited to that. And that discussion was had. And Jessica and Mike Minkler were both present at the end, decent. Participated and not just speak. Go with that.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
And I attended UWPA with Caroline, and I also attended the event that was down at Miners Lounge. How was that? It was good, it was well-attended, and we all got a tour of the Utica mansion, they love the mansion, the Utica. And it was really interesting, and they're making a lot of progress. And I'm hopeful they'll be completed. They're doing it all themselves, so, yeah, it was very impressive. Mike, did you have something else to add?
No, I, did we talk about COC last time? I mean, have we been at COC since the last meeting?
There was no meeting.
The vigilance, there's no...
Oh, there wasn't? Okay, what did I, I did, I went to the lab, go.
Yeah.
I knew before the death last night.
Yeah, we already...
Okay, perfect.
Yep. Yeah. So, now we have calendar.
I was going to say it's up on the TV, but you can't see it. So...
COC tomorrow.
COC tomorrow. And then also tomorrow is our employee appreciation at 2:30 here. We are doing ice cream sundaes, please come join us. And then on the 8th, we are having our first finance software, financial system software demo here. A planning meeting is at 5 o'clock. And then we go to on the 13th, it's the All Hazards, Mike.
I'm sure, when are we going to get that, is it going to be the whole report we have to redo?
She should be giving us something before now.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we were skipping August, and that actually is supposed to be September.
No, it wasn't, because I thought it was August 2nd that we were going to, she was going to... I was entrapped. Okay.
The 15th, I have the CSEBB meeting. I don't think we have a rep on that as of yet.
But is that canceled or...
I don't know.
EDD?
CSEBD is something that Kathy Galino is involved, that she has been, when Rebecca was here, she was sending Rebecca information. So, I'll look into that, I'll get back to you. It's an actual board meeting, it looks like. Because I have the hyperlink on.
Economic Development?
Sounds like it's...
Essential Sierra Economic Development.
Is that what it is? Okay. So, Essential Sierra Economic Development.
We don't have a person for that?
I don't know. Is that, was that you, Caroline? I'll have to look. I'll remind you. Which one? Central Sierra Economic Development?
That's Alvin.
That's Alvin.
Oh, Alvin.
There it is.
We wrote Alvin.
All right, I will remind him.
Okay. Um, they only meet quarterly, I think, right?
Yeah, and I just saw that it was canceled.
Oh, perfect.
I was, I emailed.
Okay, thank you. And then the twentieth is our meeting, contact IRWMA on the twenty-first. Um, then we have another demo on the twenty-second and then the UWPA on the twenty-seventh.
So.
Next month is a holiday.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Yes, it is, thank you. Um, item fourteen, future agenda items.
I think you had a bug load of them last time.
Yeah, I think so too. They were listed.
Right, I'll be good.
I do have one. Um, I did receive Joe Whittle's resignation.
Oh.
So I am trying to find out if we can just pull our third applicant from when we interviewed the last time. Um, I did send it to Legal for clarification because we don't have anything in our handbook or in our ordinances. Um, so once I find out if it's okay for me to bring to council and you guys appoint him, we can, I will add it to the next meeting.
Are you sure they'll hope?
But then if somebody else out there wanted that position.
Yeah, see, and, and I don't know if there's like a timeframe from the time that we appointed and received that I.
Because I thought we were, we said we want it flooded every time, but.
And encouraged him to apply.
Yeah. And it's because if he really wants to do it, he would just apply again.
Right, right.
So.
Steve, you know what? Maybe just something, um, in the past, we worked, spent a whole afternoon working on our handbook and we've not seen the draft of the changes to the handbook. I'm not sure if Doug is working on that or who.
Which handbook?
It, our, the council's handbook.
It's been.
It was a, it was a little bit of both. Rebecca was working on some and then Doug was working on some and I don't know. Um, I'm sure that's kind of gone to the cracks, yeah.
But counting.
Do you know?
Correct. You and I, we could talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah. Any others? Do you have any that you could talk to?
Yeah.
So we don't have that me.
Well, the future agenda, we're going to ask this young man to attend. Brian, we received.
No, he's, he's traveling out.
Okay.
I think, like, he's leaving to go off to college.
He's never going to college.
And he couldn't make the next meeting.
Okay.
So what Mike's speaking about is, um, a local resident, Brian Stevens, um, accomplished his Eagle Scout.
Award.
And he raised sixty thousand dollars.
Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand dollars for the local church, which church today?
St. Patrick's.
St. Patrick's right here.
So one of the, um, one of the things is there's a, there's a public award this weekend, this Saturday, where he's being awarded the Eagle Scout Award. And we have written a letter of appreciation or a success letter for him. So I think that gives him another award with his toy scout, Eagle Scout group.[1703.38]